Well, welcome, everybody. Nice to see you guys in person. I know the last time we did it was one of those walks, but um.
March, three months ago.
Yeah. Last time the show was here too. But we wanted to meet today just because I think in the past what we said with. O D Y kind of being positioned already, get things ready to go and with their land. Also printed off some of the maps of the land jurisdiction. One of the guys shared with us. I think it was Mr. The Group. They're showing the boundaries. But O D Y basically has their land tract ready to go. They got all the clearance is and. This would be the fastest way to. Get any type of development started. So within that map, you should be able to see where we are in the upper left hand corner. And seeing the land track that we're on. And if you wanted to see kind of a blown up portion of where we're going to be focusing on, we also passed around. This one that has the proposed. Reroutes and interventions that was also sent out of the email. But because we're going to be focusing on this area. I know we were saying that this would be a good opportunity for us to use summer youth workers and then O D Y's. Youth workers as well to start developing this area of the trail, especially if we end up getting some funds. Do that clean and beautiful program which we propose to get surfacing materials, but then also signage, which could be projects that help. Put the students to work, but I know there's also other opportunities to get funded with. Things like Viva connects through P R C. They have their $3,000 grant. Which has a little lot of different options of how it could be used, but. I think if we focus the summer on this area right here, this will be the best launch point and. Kind of capitalize on the development that you already see happening here with. Everything O D Y is doing. So. I did send out the agenda. That talks about everything that we'd like to go over today, starting with the introduction of what the focus would be, which is the youth involvement. And getting this going once we get our resources. But then talking about job descriptions of what those positions could be and then a plan of action, how to go about it. And then once we're done, we're going to go check out the land area behind us from the map that you see right here. So. I know last week we had discussed kind of the overview of each program, which I'll just go over real quick. And if anything has changed with. Jimmy or Leonard or Felicia or anybody else ends up logging on, which I don't see anybody yet. Then they could expand on it, but we were first talking about the summer youth program with O D Y. And Jimmy explained that it's going to be four weeks from eight to five, Monday through Thursday. So really intensive. And they're planning on having an older student, perhaps a college student, kind of serving as the main lead. Coordinating and serving as the supervisor, but then having additional three high school students as well to kind of work with that student and keep carrying forth different initiatives. I know one of their biggest concerns or one of their requests was how do we lay it out? You know, what is, what are they going to do day by day days for that space? So I did also include the packet or I have some more information back in this packet I'll pass out. That talks about potential projects that we could do. And then the summer youth program through the chapter house, they're mentioning how. It's going to begin sometime once McKinney County lets up, which will be after June 28th. So the end of this next month. And they're going to have seven employees at a time in increments of two weeks. So it's going to be rotating every two weeks. And they're looking to hire supervisor to kind of coordinate all of that. So I think whatever we propose today would go through them. So. I'm going to open it up to Leonard and Jimmy if anything has changed or if anything needs to be expanded on. Are there need updates with the chapter? I know that.
Right now, it's the chapter with the American Rescue. Rescue Plan Funding. There's still a lot of discussion going on on funding. How we're going to use it, even at the chapter, we're still working on how can we share the. Utilize and what funding and looking for. We're working on different aspects, economic development, tourism, the working international. Funding and so. We're going to have, I'm going to have to keep updating on what's going on with the chapter because. Could be funding. Bring that. Making rest of the plan fun, funding for this project. That's all the kind of funding for it in addition to what was.
Is that shovel ready? Is that money for like potentially shovel ready?
Well, that's what we're working on. That's why I want to say is hey, we've got something here. We're ready to go. We have the time here. So that would be to just hard to start to giving the funding. It will be. Once we get everything in place here, we can utilize. So we'll read. That's made a heavy on the top. So I'll be keeping you guys updated that we're doing a chapter. And see if we can get some funding from there through this line, making this the current funding. Well, that's my update for. We are working, we'll be having a work session in economic development. And through that plan that we're working on, we're. Including into this project, economic development, the hotel over here, my gosh, it's. The New Sea Store by I H S down here, including the Indian market. Which we're going to try and sort of anticipate for events and middle facilities, demonstration. And then the museum that we're trying to acquire from D I A. Which will include. This trail, but we'll be in education. And we're working with E T U on that. Because you're providing the. The system in terms of education, in terms of cultural relevance and all that. So it's, you know, you can't separate projects here. Everything is in a relief. So that's the whole thing from the chapter on.
So the rescue plan money, so that's allocated from Winter Rock to the chapters. I imagine it's got lots of stipulations and how to use it.
One point four billion for the Navajo Nation. But right now, they come for.
Trying to tell how you guys can spend it, right? Okay.
So they have all these things and. Searching, I think the president of the Navajo Nation is meeting with the chapter. He already met with some of the chapter and they're going to, so I'm sure he'll be meeting with him, which I'll be, we'll be meeting here. All in for all.
Yeah.
Went after the world is still over here. He was in favor. That's why we got the project on. So with this being a healthy type activity theme, so I'm sure that that could.
That speaks to the need to, when we're back in our plan document. I haven't looked at it in a while. I know you provided a lot of the community health profile information. Do we put that into a narrative yet or was it just still a bunch of charts and graphs and statistics? Okay. So does it make, does it already make a compelling case what we need to do this project to address? Okay, that's great.
The census assessment as long as and also with the health data profile. Most of the, I want to say update.
It's best you can get, yeah.
There's some like health data that's more persuasive, like to have these trails needed, like the alcohol related deaths. It's like more than twice the average cost of the hospital. So some health data is more concerning than other health data. Maybe we can just compile the ones that are more concerning.
Yeah, but you, you, you know, since we're trying to incorporate. These contemplative spaces along the trails that can address mental health, which can address some of the alcoholism. There's probably a correlation in there with the same with depression, suicide. The contemplative space is going to really help address some of that stuff. So if you can make those correlations in the document, that would help too. But yeah, you're right. I mean, I think. Some of the stuff on pregnancy and those kind of statistics and smoking sometimes aren't as relevant to the work we're talking about this day. More about the physical inactivity, B C D, diabetes. Part of the kind of outcomes. Cool.
Leonard, if we're going to. We had, like I passed out that recent document that talks about the workshops P R C offers, but then also some potential. Activities that Attila had proposed about, you know, involving them if they can't do shovel dirt type of projects. How would we go about getting that with Felicia and them to have it kind of already on their table once they get hired on? Because we're. I think looking to do maybe two workshops per week and then cover those things with each group.
Well, next week on the third, we have a plan. It would be good to be sure.
Okay. Okay. Virtual.
Well, right now the chapter can meet with fifteen people. We use the only five, three people in the chat. That was sixty percent being open. We're at fifteen people. So I'm pretty sure we're going to meet with the chapter.
Okay.
In addition to the teleconference.
And they're going to discuss the.
Yeah, because right now it's kind of iffy because of what's going on with the pandemic. So we should say this and that. We're still working.
Okay, I have to go put this on the agenda.
Yeah, trying to be pretty much to be sure. Yeah. Thursday, right?
Yeah. Thursday. Yes, Thursday. So this Friday. Um.
That's a lot of things. So our chapter meeting changed. From the last Wednesday of each month to the last Friday. At ten o'clock. Or that's, we agreed on it because people have different schedules. So that's. Anytime for the chapter.
Okay. How about with you, Jimmy? Has anything else kind of been changed or altered or?
I guess for us. I'm getting you guys already. For us, I guess we, I know Bert, we, we did talk about it and Bert did inform. The group. For us, like I said, we, we used to do employment. We used to do employment. So. A lot of our paperwork is pretty much. Still in place. And right now, we have some funding left over. And Bert is really adamant and wanting to get this program going. So she's shuffling funds around. To what we said, as far as we, if we can hire three youth students. That's still the same three youth students and hopefully one college student to supervise. So right now, everything is still on track and there's still time to, you know, once, once we get the approval from the nation. Which shouldn't take that long because it's still within our funding. So we just shuffle monies around. As far as employment, like I said, we, we do have everything ready. Our employment program, we were just, you know, on all, all these years, you know, and someone was taking away from us. So. With our kids, when we used to do employment, we used to actually do interviews and everything with them.
Yeah.
Instead of just, you know, hitting application, telling them about and coming up with. What our program does is we, we give up shit, uh, employment, but they have to complete everything like that. Uh, give employment, better off status, resume, school verification, and then the tax and bogus registration. Navajo Nation C I B, both security card and then if they're eating or oversensitive service. So we've always had this in place. And what they do is. It. They have to sign a P A F. It's a. Personal action form. It's called. So this, they filled this out. And then our O S types it out and everything, and then it's sent to Wonder Rock. So you're get, they get in the payroll system. So that happens first. And then there's just some new changes, I guess, right now. They have to do a W four, which is, which is new to, to, to. To, to our program. So they do a W four. And then from there. This is all the W four information. And then from there, this is where I guess Bert was asking for, for some assistance from you guys. What they do is then they'll do their organization. So pretty much. If there are three youth students and the college students, since we're hiring them. So this will probably be their, their, their place of work. So they're going to fill out their place of work. And I don't know, hopefully not me, but I'm pretty sure it's going to be me. I'll probably be their overall supervisor. You know, just to check on them and timesheets and all that. But right here, the job title, I guess, I don't know, we probably would need help from that one, like, you know, what, what, what tools they're going to use. You know, if there's any heavy lifting, because everything that's being included right here, students employed as youth employees with office of Mayu, Eastern Navajo. Are eligible for the self insured workers. This is for workers comp. So that's why they have to, everything that has to be on that that they're going to be doing. And like we said, I think there's going to be no, no machinery as far as operating machinery, a lot of just hand tools, I guess.
Right.
It's what they're going to be doing. So they fill that out and, and you know, their job title. I think what we're going to do is maybe, you know, we probably will have to come up with a title for them, maybe. Trail crew worker or something like that. Then that, that, that has to be on the P A F and then their job description of what they're going to do. And then again, whoever the workplace supervisor is, I thought. Time off on it. And they sign off on it. I'm going to go back to Patricia. So, so this is the, the main one, I guess. And then all we go is we have it sit down like I said. They, they go through some questionnaires. This is just indicating that, you know, I'm aware that this is absolutely no change of work side, you know, aside work side and stuff like that. This was when we used to, like I said, we hire a lot of kids. Sometimes they'll say, I don't want to work there. I want to go work over here. So we tell them, no, once you go to land office, you're going to stay there. So they sign and agree to it. Then just them being on time, being punctual, being respectful to that workplace they're at. So that's what we have them fill out. And then the same way again. Um, because we have Michelle and in knowledge form again, because you know, Navajo Nation, you know, there are a lot, a lot, a lot of kids that want work. So what they used to do is they'll hit up the chapter, work two weeks over there, then they'll come up here and ask for unemployment. So that's when we started catching a lot of these or else they'll work for N D O L. So that's where Patricia, the office specialist, they'll call. So yeah, Jimmy already worked for two weeks. So Jimmy will be put on the bottom of the pile over here and tell, you know, all these guys are hired and if there's extra monies, then Jimmy can work up here. So yeah, the Navajo Nation, they, you know, kids will hop here and there. So we, we haven't filled that out. And then upon completion of their work. I guess again, if I'm the supervisor, I have to, you know, watch them do spot checks and how they're working, were they, you know, maintaining regular attendance, being consistently punctual. Demonstrate positive attitude and behavior, present appropriate appearance, you know, interpersonal relationship skill, completed task effectively. So all these are filled out on them and then they're turned in. So that way, you know, because a lot of times they, 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 they call us, no, Jimmy worked for you guys two years ago. Well, how was his work performance and all that? So we use that, you know, okay, this is what they did and stuff. And then here again, like we said, when the kids, when the kids come in. We, we asked them, you know, some of their goals, their objectives, you know, what do they want to do in the future, you know, kind of, you know, get that rapport with them. And, and, and stuff like that. So that's what we do. And then they're just signed their form saying that, you know, they will work the thirty two hours, they will be punctual. So all these go back to Wonder Rock and, and, you know, it's kept on file. And then we give them a copy of a sample resume, sample letter of interest, because you know, that as far as with us, we're under education program. So instead of just giving them an application and fill it out, you know, we have to have, I want to put it through a letter of interest, you know, why, why do you want to work here? So that gives us an idea, you know, and then we sit down with them. We also talk to them, you know, because, you know, I remember when I was fourteen, you know, I, I didn't. Really know. I just wanted to come here to work, you know, or my dad sent me to come to work. You know, so then we sit down with them as far as, you know, telling them, you know, these are some of the things that you're going to be asked. Once you leave that red or we are trying for another job, we're just trying to get you guys ready to, to how to do a letter of interest. A resume. So we kind of walk you with them and at the same time we're teaching them. So that's what we, what we do here. And then. And then just a small interview sheet that we go through with them also, you know, like, again, introducing yourself, you have little things like their name, clan, age, parents, school, and then what they're interested. And then how do you know about our program? What does it take to be successful? So just little answers. Sometimes they'll say, I don't know, you know, so that's where we kind of go back over with them. And again, like I said, this is just to get them ready. If they should go off the red or if they apply somewhere, you know. And, and at least they'll have an idea of what to do. Because when I remember when I was fourteen, fifteen, I went to Division of Labor a long time ago and they just say, here, fill it out. I always remembered that. I just filled out my job application and in fact it was filled out with pencil. And I turned it back in and I worked for three weeks.
I would have filled out in crayon, just for the hell of it, yeah.
So you know, those are some of the things, I guess, a lot of the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen year olds don't really know. So we try to educate them and teach them. At the same time, you know, they, they have that knowledge that they need instead of just fill out an application and come back to you.
So can I ask on that one question where, you know, what your goals for the future type thing? And suppose. Kid says, I, I want to work in public health or I want to work in agriculture. Do you then connect them to other professionals in the community that can mentor them or get them, steer them in the right direction?
Sometimes we'll, we'll, we'll do that. We'll give them like, we have a list in there, like see if they see, they want to work with the pharmacy department and stuff like that. And then again, now, like I said, we haven't done employment for at least ten years, eight years, something like that. So all that, you know, if, if the money was pulled back and, and, and again, I hate to say it, Leonard, but all these monies were given back to the chapter. So, you know, we never, then that's where the whole.
Yeah, Leonard, where is it?
The whole five agencies of O D Y, we don't do employment anymore.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The only time we'll have employment is just enough to hire one, like, like say, like for her for, for example. We have, uh, we have to have a position for that youth center up there because, you know, the female, we have to have a female worker up there. So the nation allowed us to keep at least some funds in our area because they're telling us to, you know, do recreation and stuff. So for her for notice satellite office, we have two, two, two gentlemen that are working there. So we have to constantly, you know, hire a female worker over there. Here, you know, I'm the only male, so I, I work with ladies. So we're, we're okay here. But, um, other than that, that's what we used to do. So hopefully, you know, we can get monies and start employing kids again. But like I said, Bert, we, we had some funding available to, to, to earmark that for at least the three students and then one college student.
Okay.
So right now, like I said, the funding is being transferred. So Bert and Pat, they went to Wonder Rock. They're going to ask questions on that, that personnel. Cause right now a lot of it's new virtual. I don't know, you know, if we can still, you know, maybe there might be some changes in some of these forms, but. Most of it is done. Most of it is here. So we just kind of probably have to iron up stuff here and there a little bit. But I think we're ready to go. And the only thing we need help on is probably just the job description. Maybe we.
That's on our agenda here in a second, I think. So.
The job description is, is just whatever they're going to do. Like if we say, you know, for, for. For here, if they were going to work here, if they're going to be direct aid, you know, I have to put everything there. We'll be working with you. Providing indoor outdoor activities, board games, basketball, you know, volleyball. Will kind of, you know, then this will have to be descriptive on Fridays or Thursdays. Will help clean, you know, so I have to put down mops, we pick up trash, stuff like that. So the description kind of just have to, you know, all these little points. We did have some incidents in, in the past years that, like for example, one of the kids was working down at I H S. And she accidentally was stuck with a vehicle. There, you know, the supervisor there didn't put that, you know, she would be around needles and stuff. You know, that, that was some, so some of the things like that come up. And so that's why the, the job description has to be kind of, you know, detailed. So. And we tell them when they used to come to work and it's like, if your boss says, go change the light bulb up there, you know. If it's not on your job description, you have no business putting up a ladder and climbing up there and unscrewing that light bulb. It may be a simple job. If something happens, you're not covered under workman's comp because workman's comp will ask this on their job description. So. So it's, it's a really liability as far as the ones that are the high school students. So I think that's why over the years, some of the things have changed, like I H S, they wouldn't take no more fourteen, fifteen year olds. So they were only, only take like sixteen on up. About the travel program that work with the younger kids, but still, you know, they would be, you have to be supervised.
So on the safety side of things. Will O D Y then provide P P E, the protective gear, gloves, hard hat?
I guess I just kind of wrote it down. When you guys were talking about it right here, supplies and more projects.
Yeah.
I guess that's where I'm pretty sure Bert is going to ask for some help, I guess, because once we, you know, employ them. I don't know if we have funding available to buy like gloves, yeah, gloves, or if they're going to be out there, if they're going to need hard hat. But I'm pretty sure we'll usually tell them to dress for, you know, if you have, you know, boots, you have to get boots.
Yeah.
You know, you can't be out there with tennis shoes or sandals, you know, using.
Exactly. Right, right. That's, that's, I can come up that list pretty easily. I, I questioned the need for hard hats. If there's no, nothing overhead that can fall on them. So I'm not hung up on the hard hat as much, but. Working with pickaxes, I think it's eye protection. If you're doing a sledgehammer job on a rock, eye protection gloves.
Yeah.
Long sleeve shirt.
Detail, if, if we do the, the job description detail, you know, maybe week one, they're just, we're just here, not the area, you know. Then maybe week two, we're going to do some, you know, rock busting rocks or maybe.
Maybe they get an O D Y trail crew tee shirt or something, long sleeve tee shirt.
So, you know, as far as the equipment, I think that's what Bert will probably say if, if the chapter or, 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 you know, organization can help out with shovels, rakes. Stuff like that. We do have some here, but they're pretty weathered. But I guess that's probably what some of the things that we can probably list down to as far as what tools are needed. You know, like the pig bags or.
So could the chapter provide a tool cache that could be used by this crew than other crews later on? And keep it in a, keep it locked up somewhere in inventory.
That one, we have to ask administration. We can do that on the third. And that's there and see if we see what's done to you.
And then, yeah, I think that'd be good because then once we're done with the project, then we can take all the tools back to the warehouse. And then the next crew that comes in, you know, be assigned to that.
You just need to find out what's on the map for each line item.
Well, McLeod is about seventy dollars a piece. They're the most expensive box team to tool out there. Pickaxes and shovels are reasonable.
Well, I think, um, even if that doesn't go through.
Clean and beautiful and pay for that one.
Clean and, well, we don't put that into it, but I know that Viva connects ground is three thousand. And one of their things is built environment approaches modifying. So it could be like a shed shovel thing that we house it. Chapter or something, just how we frame it with the youth appointment, I think. So that might be a good option as well.
For the report.
Yeah.
There's something you can do that.
I think we should go through that here.
Yeah, that's the next thing. So that's a good chance.
So Jimmy on, I want to go back to the mentoring thing. So you have three students and a college student. So if, if you have their. Entrance interview, starting interviews with those folks. And they identify a couple of career choices or trade skills. And if anything comes up with natural resources, I'm willing to, you know, have an interview with them too about how to get a natural resource skill, how to get in the park service. I think. I think if we know what they are, I think we could commit to finding people here or elsewhere that'd be willing, at least have an interview, a conversation with them, help them get a direction. What do you need to do in school? What do you got to do for seasonal job? How do you, if you like trail crew, how do you get a trail crew job that's longer than four weeks and pays better and? And pays better and get to go to Yellowstone or wherever it might be. I think all that stuff that we can help them think through.
Cool, alrighty.
Yeah, um, Sheldon does have that packet if you want to start transitioning towards that.
Yeah. Packet would use for a youth, uh, contribution for in two blocks. And it puts a lot of job descriptions for the youth. And I'm just thinking that, um, if you look on page three, there's like task one. On the work location three, it's just like core members will clear trail for door and stream of the mountains. There's some good examples, um, uh, core members while build steps from bench to outdoor. There's going to be, there'll be weed removal from two areas. That could be the trails, um, lay land, feed fibers, which is an area. Need and be came remainder of area and that goes to high school and lake bed education. So there's like plenty of examples that I feel like we could use to do work on the trail. So we can just change like maybe youth employment employees could do your trail for door trees or eat on the trail. Something like that.
We could definitely probably revise this and maybe this and picture that on it. Yeah. If you walk the trail, yeah, there's, there's really no trees too. So maybe just a lot of rocks or weeds. Maybe trash, yeah.
So the, so the Y C C grant. Um, is very task oriented. So the way the Y C C work. If, if you did something on here, like if there was a task five, which was, you know, building a trail head or a balloon, launch site for a balloon. Y C C wouldn't pay for that because it's not in the task agreement. So those tasks are a little bit different than. Some of the other job description things, I think I saw somewhere else in here, um. Ability to use hand tools, hands for tools, controls, other objects. There's something else. Central fucking, so I know folks that do, but I, I could easily come up with a list of twelve, fifteen things. That would be, uh, job description. And I think it's, you know, half, work in the sun, eight to five. Um, you, you know, use trail tools for digging, chopping, sledgehammer for breaking up rocks. Uh, ability to lift fifty to seventy-five pounds or whatever the li- limit is.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the kind of a job description of what they expect to be doing is, you know, twelve, you know, working in the outdoor environment. Sun, rain, wind, hail, tornadoes, whatever you think you want to put in there. Prime, and then plus the requirements of the P P E, they're required of, you know, boots, long pants, long shirt.
Yeah.
So, you know, we might want to say, well, we got to put up a, a shade structure for them to take breaks. And if they're out there on that slope, you know, they're going to take breaks.
Yeah.
But that might be another purchase of a shade structure. But it'd be easy to look through this thing. So here's, here's one on, uh, example eight for Virginia. This is for a crew leader, but it's, it's right in the middle of the staple fold. Perform trail maintenance and improvements. Construct trails, remove debris and conduct shorelines cleanup, construct structures that minimize impact of natural resources. So that is broad enough there that if we want to, um, have them do something with barricades for vehicles. It falls under that construct structures that natural resource. If we were going to close a steep section of trail and barricade with rock or logs or, or do something that protects natural resources. So it can be, for our purpose, I think it'd be pretty broad as long as it's, it's in that.
Yeah.
In that thing, so.
Yeah, that.
I can give this to Virginia and they can do that. Just to give us some idea.
Hmm.
And once we walk the trail, people will come and have a general idea. Again.
That could be install signage, you know, it could be a bunch of things like that.
Yeah, ideally we'd like to see it, um, I think. Layer with the summer program. So it sounds like this one would be more intensive, like actually doing the stuff that they said they wouldn't. Um, but there's opportunities like from that resource page that I, um, had passed out right here. Um, that Attila was talking about, you know, you, you having them walk the trails and do surveys. Or interview a grandparent about, um, something about the area. So I think it'd be good to do a layer of both. So they're not just outside in the sun all day. They could go in and do storytelling and then. Layer it with whenever we do presentations on this type of stuff. Um, but I don't know, maybe Vir- Virginia could look at those. Uh, we could all kind of look at them and then kind of compress what we see as a description for each. Cause I know page five of that packet too, there's a good description on crew leaders as well, as far as being the leader and leading a group. Which I think will be important for that college student position.
Yeah, once we, I guess, once, once this moves forward some more, if the funding actually goes into, you know, the, the hiring process. We can probably always meet and then just concentrate on the job description.
Uh huh.
Um, like I said, pretty much if we can get a college student, uh, he or she will be the supervisor. But I know I'll probably still go out there and check on them and stuff like that, uh, with the three workers. Um, uh, I, again, we probably need to go through the interview process and then try to, you know, speed up the, the hiring. Because we, you know, again, with our office needs and then I'm sure here too, we want, you know, good kids that are going to work, you know, that are going to work. Not just going to stand around and stuff like that. And, you know, so that's what we, we usually have a kid, so we want you guys to work, you know? Especially if you send you, you know, here, you're there to work, you're not there to be on your phone, you're not there to, you know? So we, we kind of enforce that. So, but I think for here, we actually have to be in public physical condition. But they'll be out there, you know?
Reminds me, my son was a summer, uh, crew supervisor for City of Albuquerque Bosque Crew. And, uh, one, one crew, they, uh, they finished their lunch break and the crews. Dumped out all the extra water for the afternoon because they didn't want to work. So, oh, that's tough. Work the rest of the day without water. They learned that, uh, can't screw the supervisor.
I think that's where a lot of, a lot of the, uh, times have changed, you know? I mean, you know, again, you know, with our office needs, we probably be, you know, it's kind of this, this reality, this is work, you know? And, and, uh, even with our recreation program, it was, it was in the last ten, fifteen years, it's really changed.
Yeah.
We're told we can't push these kids. We're told we can't get them outside. It's, it's, it's really a big issue, uh, liability, you know? And I know chapter, chapter faces the same thing, you know, I mean, if I used to, you know, build outhouses or park benches. Even drive a vehicle, you know, and cut weeds very middle of nowhere, come back. Now they, they can't do that no more. And then it's, it's sad, you know, how is Jimmy going to learn if he just sits in, in, in the hat, in the chapter all day and. You know, there's really no, no point. You might as well just give him a check and tell him to go home. Thank the nation.
So if it is, I mean, if they're here in July, likely to be pretty hot weather.
Yeah.
And then you may also hit monsoons afternoons. So may, maybe, maybe you talk to the crew, you know, would they be willing to start at seven to, seven to three? And then a- after lunch, they work indoors on some of these other projects. So they're only outside for five hours a day instead of eight hours.
We can probably all, you know, we can let Virginia know, we can sit down again and talk about it. Yeah, because. If it's getting hot, I mean, we can get them out there from seven to noon. Then in the afternoon, they can, you know, do some other.
Do research projects or, you know, learn, do some more training or something else along the lines.
Yeah, maybe that's when maybe we can get at least a representative comment, talk to them about, you know, uh, maybe, you know, returning to someone there.
Career ideas, yeah.
Career ideas, they, they write, write on there. So, you know, then maybe just do some small mixtats. Even here, I mean, we could probably have them just track or something here too. Get them, you know, doing something, you know?
So I was thinking too, like, um, since they're high school students and they're going to be the ones supervisor, the college student. What if, what if we try to like, this is just, I'm just thinking like, cause when they're in school, they have to do eventually do group projects. Or do like group assignment, teamwork, um, what if we created this as a group project? And have a college student tenant design the, the project for each of the students. So they know exactly what their role will be, um, they come on board. So I know not all of them have banned the group project. Cause usually somebody's always flapping.
Yeah, they always do, they do.
To work on one goal, I feel like they might, they might understand it a little more, better that it's part of life.
Yeah.
Even if you find a job, you have to work as a team.
Yeah.
Kind of like emphasize it like that. I think it's more.
We can, you know, we, we could do team building activities. We have the, the, we used to do the rope or two of the places that down. So we could do. You know, some team building activities, you know, uh, shoot, we can go through. One of the main things too that I would talk about is, you know. Alcohol and drugs. Because I've been there, you know, I'm, I'm, I've been in recovery for fifteen years. But shoot, been there, done that, name it, I've probably done it, you know, and I'm not proud of it, but, you know, a lot of times. When we used to get youth, I used to always emphasize that. At least just one can understand, to stay with. We do a lot of that too, presentations as far as alcohol, drugs, uh, teaching and stuff like that.
Yeah.
I have a question. Is this going to be like the Chastor has their own summer employment crew and then also O D Y? So is there a possibility, a possibility that there might be two different job descriptions? Because it seems like the O D Y group, like they're a little bit more intense. They can do like the trail work and all of that, that's labor. But as for the Chastor group, that might be a little bit different. So I was wondering if there is going to be two different job descriptions? Or are we trying to like layer it all as one?
I don't think we'd be able to adjust the chapter's job description, but we could maybe do this with the hopes of. Feeding volunteers from whenever we work with the chapter to work with these guys. And then that would be where, you know, these things would just kind of overlay with what the job descriptions of O D Y people would be doing. So if they're doing signage, maybe one, two weeks. Whenever we give the presentation over here, we could say, oh, these guys are working here from seven to whatever. If you want to volunteer and continue working, you know? Maybe that's how we pair it together. Okay. What would you recommend, Latasha? Having two different.
I guess it has to go to the, uh, chapter as well.
Uh huh.
And see what they decide on. But I like the idea of, um, you bringing up like. The summer activities along with some of the workshops, maybe with P R C. So they're not always outside most of the time, but. Morning, they could be outside and then in the afternoon, they could come. They don't get pretty hot in the sun. And we don't want a kid out there getting hurt or anything like that.
Right.
So I like that idea.
Well.
I remember like dreaming when I was working for the chapter. We were taken out there to read to people that live out there in the morning. Afternoon, you have your left standing there, you're taking them out there. So all day, you're out in the sun and you're. Kind of like, hey, you're out there in the sun all day.
There was no book. Yeah. Times have changed. I mean, they don't make them like they used to anymore, guys. We're the, we're the cream of the crop here.
So, so then what I'm hearing is that, um, the chapter may be able to modify that job, that work, job description. To allow the, those youth to spend some time either, uh, working on trails with other experienced workers. Um, to get some experience that, that might lead towards other opportunities. Plus, you know, tying this educational, uh, activities into it. I mean, this, that list of stuff I just created because I was really frustrated hearing that you're going to hire these kids, they're going to not do any work. It's like, wait a minute, that doesn't. That doesn't register with my mind. So I quickly cranked out this list of ideas that support what we're doing and then getting kids engaged.
I think it is, it is, um, you know, again, uh, it, 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 it goes, you know, if the chapter does hire, because, you know, in the past, yeah. They will hire students and they will be calling us, can you do a presentation down there, Jimmy? So, you know, sometimes I would bring that up, you know? Bring that up to the kids there, you know, I know the leader there, I know the police would be there. You know, this, this is what we have to do now. You know, sometimes I kind of get after them. Times have changed, but you know? I wish things would be, you know, we want you guys to be out there to work, to understand, to, to feel honored, to be, you know, work. Um, not presentations and stuff. But again, that's the chapters and this policy that started. You know, and as far as Navajo, we kind of, you try to remember, you know, you know. You're going to hurt his feelings, you know? That has really changed our kids.
Not only on Navajo, it's everywhere. Get a participation ribbon, right? Yeah.
Yeah, so it, it's, it is, you know, every other day we always talk about, you know, even our after school programs, our recreation programs, you know? I remember back in the day, we would take hikes. We would ride bikes and be outside, but today, nowadays. We don't want to be outside.
So is there a, a, is there any kind of a wrap up event when you finish the, oh, Lex, I'm, I'm thinking. Um, there's kids who have some really cool trail work out there and reroute some stuff. And I'm thinking, can? Can there be an event where you invite the kids and their families to come see what the kids can be proud and show their parents?
Yeah.
What they did.
Always do that, we will.
I think that might add to.
Because that's what we do sometimes, if, you know, a project, at the end, we'll, we'll invite, we'll do like a small dinner or a lunch. Tell the parents, invite the parents and family that, you know, this is what your child has done. Look at some of these things, you know, but it can be done. And then maybe we should even get a, a guest speaker of, of some sort to talk to the kids too. So it, it can be done. Uh, we just need to, like I said, probably just sit down with Virginia and, and, you know, kind of schedule that out. Because, uh, we used to do that. Uh, and that's always been part of our, 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 you know, model, I guess, as far as what we're working with the youth that we do. Um. Give them a reward or, you know, have a small dinner for them. Even our kids that participate in the after school rec. Before school, back, school back, we call it after, you know, schooling bash or something. We cook for them, we feed them, we tell them, thank you for being out here. Thank you for joining us, you know? And then, you know, go back to school, please stay in school and all, all the good stuff. So it can be done. It can be done. We can probably get a guest speaker and have them acknowledge the beauty of their work and stuff like that.
I really like the idea of the bike rodeo. I think design, having the kids to design, help design the bike rodeo. Would be one of the tasks that we could work on. How to, the serve bike, how to ride a bike safely.
Yeah.
Um, all those things. Yeah, I think it would be popular and I think a lot of people would come out and participate in it.
So, so yours is four weeks, Jimmy, right?
Uh, three weeks.
Three weeks.
Well, looking, maybe we can probably push it to four. But like I said, it just depends on the funding, but I know Virg that we, we can do it at thirty-two hours, Monday through Thursday. Uh, eight hours a day. Uh, again, depending if you want that trail developed, we can, you know, push, push a little bit. But in, again, you know, we can always bring in inside too, at least a few hours to, uh.
Well, maybe if we could as a crew, you know, review that document that has all the job descriptions. And put together at least a rough draft by, um, Tuesday or Wednesday meeting, Thursday, by Tuesday maybe. Cause then there'll be a crew leader and then the high school one. And then we could always use that high school one to request with these guys and get more people involved with it. But if not, then, uh, we'll be able to look at these activities. And then one of them is, you know, coordinate the bike rodeo. That could be something for a two week project for these guys if we don't get them. But if they do get hired on, then we could still do it, you know? So maybe we could plan from that. But if we're planning for those four weeks, it might be hard to do all of these things.
Well, so maybe it is the bike rodeo that you're, you know, you're going to, you're going to spend six hours working outdoors, then you're going to come in and. Learn how to organize a bike rodeo and have that ready to go. And you're going to put together a manual that someone can use next year to repeat the activity. And they're getting paid it. So there is resource everywhere, how to do a bike rodeo.
So that would be the whole afternoon.
The whole afternoon would be two weeks or three weeks of, you know, putting a bike rodeo together than, than having it.
And then pairing it somehow with the development. So I imagine the first week would be where they walk it with Leonard and learn the stories and then they could fill out this. Second week would be them actually going out there and clearing it. Third week would be maybe a signage and then the fourth week would be the wrap up with the bike rodeo kind of plan. If you're talking about, uh, if we're talking about the individual projects.
So depending on, I mean, when we walk it, you guys, so, you know, three kids and supervisor are not going to do a whole lot of trail work.
Yeah.
So I think, uh, as we walk it, we gotta say, what's the priority project? This is, is it just defining the path, taking some of the erosion problems? But I would think that, uh, there. But I would think that uh they're gonna need a, a day of training on trail stuff from me, that's one thing. And then uh bike rodeo, so I think they should probably be working on the trail, they're, if they're hired as a trail crew, they should be working on. That trail every single day for those four weeks, for four hours or. And then they can do other stuff, but I think that's the priority, is to show that you're making improvement on. It's for kids that they only spent a couple of days on, you've never seen any difference. So I think it's important that they learn trail skills.
Okay.
But I think, I think it's, it's gonna, it's gonna work, I think, you know, again, that, you know, we're excited, you know. And we need to, we need to go back out and maybe lay in some stakes to learn to kind of lay that trail.
Yeah, I thought about bringing that pin flag today to mark stuff, but I figured they'll all be calm by the time the kids got here, it makes sense to put them out there. So I'm willing to coordinate the job description stuff. By Tuesday, right? We're gonna put that together by Tuesday and give it to you by close of business Tuesday.
Yeah.
Monday's a holiday for me. So guys wanna send me any, anything that jump out at you that you think is really important, send it to me and I'll try to put a package together.
I can, I can have Virs to do that this also, and I can sit down over there, we can kind of pick some stuff.
Yeah. And I'll try to put that together, so we're only, so we'll do it for this group, and there'll be some, we'll try to identify, let's try to identify some lower level tasks that. Chapter youth could do that aren't uh maybe as intense, but it's still maybe some work.
I, I, I like the idea of where, I mean, even that the signage, they can work on the signs, like that's a better idea. Like to see, you know, people were, wow, cool, they're doing this, you know. I think that would be good for the chapter, to put some new signs. Even that, yeah, but we, we, we would need signs on there, because we're trying to fix up the baseball field, we cut all the leaves down the other day. Me and the staff, we went out there, so we're just waiting for, for it to dry, so we can just burn it. And then uh I ordered the lumber and stuff, so hopefully my paperwork goes through. Once we get the lumber and everything together, we're gonna repaint some of the bleachers, we're gonna do the cover the bed up, we're gonna repaint it, so hopefully that, you know. Pick, can, can, can take care of it, because we have our youth, we only have a six kid, but they're pretty good, the other day we picked up trash again and stuff like that, so. We've been getting out there and, you know, just kind of fix it up, fix it up. But uh again, you know, like yesterday, we went out, I guess, I went out there again, you know, still see, you know, beer bottles or whiskey. Miniatures, you know, so I just picked them up and, so, you know, again, it's the after hours, but some of the things that we're planning on. Yeah, we, I took the gate, I took the gate back down, but we're gonna try to find some harnesses to where we can put it back up. And what we're trying, we're gonna try to do is we're gonna put up a sign, you know, that can be locked up from five o'clock. You know, and then in the morning it'll be opened again, so, or, or I just told Virs, one of us, we probably have to dedicate ourselves to come up at nine, at nine, or eight-thirty and lock it up. And then open back up in the morning. So we'll see how that works, if they still cut the gate, the fence, and stuff like that, because we've done that before. It's just the, I think they thought that they hang out out there. So but I know, I think that if we keep going over there, every other evening, we're over there, you know, so the kids are, you know. The rope course? I, I, I don't know, I don't think so, we don't have the funding, that was a grant through I H S, and they built it up there through I H S funding. And then we were already certified with Winkie, because Winkie had a rope course. And then Santa Fe Mountain Center had a rope course, so we went out there, we got certified over there. And then when this one was built, Project Adventure came out, they certified us too, so, so we were certified, and so we could pick kids there, there, and here. But yeah, that was a grant through I H S.
Is it just you and Virs that worked it?
Yeah, no, uh there's, I have, uh we have like six staff, there's Virginia, my child, there's Kristen, there's Roberta, and then there's Clarisha, and there's. And then our office, that's a pack, and then we have two, that life school workers, that there's David Malahan and. So we're, 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 we're doing our summer plan, to this for your information, guys, uh we're gonna do some activities, but it's gonna be all outdoors, so we're gonna be putting the cart back up, so we're doing this on movie night. We're gonna put the big cart back up, everything will be, people, this will be their day, folks. We used to do movie nights in the evening, we'll put chairs right here, we'll block off, and people put the cart back there. And we used to do like the concession, and stuff like that, to show D D movies or some kind of, or western movie. We're gonna start that back up, but it's just gonna be, we're just gonna have to watch, next, the parking lot.
No need to sneak in your buddy's trunk. Well, we're, we're already at eleven o'clock, so I'm not sure if you guys wanna walk it and then maybe just keep in the back of your mind these individual projects. Um I think these workshops are all a good um starting point between P R C and then what Attila had provided. Of things that could be done in the afternoon, as far as projects, you know, making the signs or doing a storytelling, uh oral history thing with the family member. Uh we could coordinate those for the indoor ones, but as far as the actual trail and what uh needs to be done, I know that Attila had provided this. That shows where a barricade needs to be put up or um, you know, where there's gonna be signage or a trailhead. Um so keep those things in mind too, because this is where um those individual projects are gonna come up, especially if they're doing like a reroute, maybe on this bend over here. Um then we could figure out, you know, how long will that take, how many shovels will it require to make clearance, or. How long will it take for them to move uh rocks that are getting stolen up down here, up here, to, you know, those types of things, so.
I think the barricade, I uh I was gonna bring that up yesterday, or two days ago, because I used to take my daughter up there and we would shoot around and stuff like that. You know, and then there's, I see people walking, they usually walk through there, it's around, the other day I saw a truck of black, so it's zoom, just hauling butt in the back road that way. Zoom back there, I don't know where he went, he just zoomed back out.
Transcend heavy equipment, maybe V I A roads could do it, as a, you know, they could just, boulders can place the blocks, see them coming through.
Yeah, I, cause every other evening, I, I go out here with my daughter and, you know, shoot around and stuff.
Yeah.
Kids, uh, you know, there, or elders and people walking, the other thing too is that's all.
Well, let's go ahead and take a walk, and then we'll come back with this big thing, and then we'll readjust what Attila started with up there and then draw it out, this is a larger print of uh what we're gonna be walking. I'm gonna go ahead and stop our stream, cause I'm gonna run out of battery.